Meeting for Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. First order business is pledge allegiance, Charles.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public, for which it stands, one nation, on our
Okay, item two, public forum, and uh, any item on the agenda, any items on the agenda? Anyone wishing to address the board, is there? Not sure we see anybody from?
It's not on the agenda though.
Any item on the agenda?
Wait till later?
Yes.
That's fine.
What's your timeline? I know you have to get to work up along with, right?
Yes, but I don't know what if ever source is going to come up later under old business like last time.
I was, I would, I would be given most likely just give an update as to where we proceeded, but you folks have as much information as, as they do relative to where we are with ever source.
You haven't heard from them.
I have not heard back from them on the questions yet, that's the only thing. So, once we get those back.
Your pleasure, I can talk now or later, whatever you think.
Why don't you do it now?
Okay, thank you.
Come on up and just name and address for the record, please.
Oh, for the record, Aaron O'Hare, five-ten Great Hill Road, Guilford. All right, I don't have a written statement today. I hope that the, all the selectmen got a chance to read my letter that was handed out by Cynthia Damer on May first, your May first meeting. It was long, but there is, this is, there are a lot of moving parts to this capital project, so. And I haven't gotten back any answers yet. I requested a response in that letter from the town for certain, not from EverSource, but certain town, things that the town can answer. The town could, for one, for instance, one of the things I requested, I still haven't gotten the answer from the town attorneys or an opinion from him, a copy of that, whether or not a public hearing is required on a scenic designated road, which is Great Hill Road, up or down. If he decides it isn't, well, then I'd like to see that opinion. But this is a scenic designated road, it has certain protections in zoning code, protections or restrictions in the subdivision code. I believe it was designated under the state act that came out in nineteen eighty-one. And then Guilford followed suit shortly thereafter, and there are seven scenic designated roads in Guilford. Why do we designate them as scenic if that doesn't afford them certain extra protections and restrictions? The, the statement, there was a draft, I got it from the Dammers, I didn't. Apparently, this is the EverSource letter, it's dated May fourth. It was quoted in the Courier that came out on Thursday, but I didn't read that till Saturday. But it says it's addressed to our valued customer, singular. And it's referred to in the Courier as the draft summary. I, you know, Matt, I hope you know what I'm referring to. This document, one-page document from EverSource, okay?
I was wanting to send it to send.
Yeah, okay, it's a little confusing.
Actually, I sent it to David.
Because it's dated May fourth, but it hasn't publicly been released yet. And it's also, it's addressed to our valued customer. But it's not addressed to you at, or to the select people.
The nomenclature on here is insignificant. This is what EverSource provided to us given for a summary of the project.
Okay, because it hasn't gone out to the folks north Guilford yet. And apparently, and I'd like you to verify this, today, they are starting to put up installed polls. That's what is said in this document and.
That was, that's what was said by EverSource right from the beginning, that they were going to move forward that piece, but it was the vegetation management that was going to be delayed until such time as we were able to convene a meeting with EverSource and concerned citizens.
Right, so the, right now, the people north Guilford don't know that the polls are going in unless they read the Courier, I guess. Okay, so this notice is a little belated, I mean, it should go out.
It's not a notice, this was a response to a inquiry we made about the capital project. There's not a public notice.
Because I even, I've been following this rather closely, and even when I called your office on Friday morning, they said, oh, don't worry, Aaron, the project's on pause. I thought that meant the capital project was on pause, but apparently, it only means the tree cutting portion is on pause. Because that's all that the town has direct authority over is the issuance of the tree cutting permit by Kevin McGee.
I think you're mistaken, because in fact, we don't have control over any part of this process. The individual homeowners have control over the cutting of trees on their property. The, we as a town have no control over this project. This is licensed by the Public Utility Regulatory Authority, which you're very familiar with. And they have the ability to work to do this project. The vegetation management delay is as a result of the request that the town officially made, pending a meeting with the residents to fully discuss this document and the questions both the Domers and you have proposed to them.
And so, but I was under the understanding they can't move forward without that tree cutting permit from Kevin McGee.
Yes, and that has been, those have been granted?
Yeah, but that one hasn't.
Not granted, but Kevin is in the process of determining which trees.
So we're waiting for the, whatever hearing or public period before we start.
Right, and it's a public meeting, not a public hearing. So, because the answer to the question is town attorney, I think I mentioned this to you previously. Town attorney has ruled that the ordinance refers only to subdivisions, the protections that would refer home, that's his opinion.
All right, could I get a copy of this opinion?
It's not been officially written yet, but that is his opinion on advice to me.
Okay, could we run, so, so the tree cutting is on hold until the tree cutting permit?
Vegetation management project is on hold until such time as we have a meeting with EverSource and concerned residents.
Okay, and my last question, I guess, oh, to, is to be clear, so the process, so they're going to submit documentation?
They have already submitted one piece of documentation, which you're holding.
Yeah, yeah.
And you know there is a response to the questions that were proffered by you and the Domers.
Right, and so then the town will review them and set a public forum.
Public meeting, public forum.
And, but we'll get it, there'll be a certain period, like maybe a fourteen-day period for other people to review those documentation.
Trying to determine how best, we're trying to determine how best to get that out to the impacted neighbors, or the residents. Potentially even mailing a direct copy to every household on Great Hill. That is one of the things that we are contemplating in my office is to send out a copy of that document and the answers to the questions to every resident impacted by this project.
All right, and my, my last, thank you, and my last comment is, it was in my, the letter that was handed out May first. My number one concern at this point, I know we can't stop the polls and we can't stop this project with the high-intensity wires, which I still don't understand, no one has told us exactly the kilovolts in these wires that are coming in. But is the birds, there are certain federal and state restrictions of when you can do tree cutting operation concerning neotropical migrants, those are the songbirds, but really, all birds are affected. Anything that lives and nests in the trees would be affected, not just the trees that are cut, but for a zone around it with all the disturbance and commotion and chainsaw. And we have lost thirty-five percent of our birds in Connecticut. The Connecticut Audubon has documented this, it's down, I've noticed it in my own yard, not as, not as loud, not as melodious as in previous years. So this is a critical bird nesting and rearing period that we are now in, we have just entered that period. The neotropical migrants came back end of April, now they're still coming back, the hummingbirds just came back. The Baltimore Orioles came back.
Thursday.
Thursday, they come back, the Baltimore Orioles nest high in the trees, these are, that's a protected species. So this is my concern. We do need answers about that. The EverSource has restricted cutting in their environmental impact statements, they do on certain projects such as transmission corridor projects. The state of Connecticut does restrict cutting of trees in the larger forest management projects that they do in state forests. And this is, our birds are more critical than ever, their fate is more critical than ever. So that is something that I feel strongly about and should be honored and maybe worked, if EverSource can work with that, as well as the scenic shrubs. Kevin will give out permit for cutting X amount of trees, we don't know how many, it's in excess of two hundred trees, maybe three hundred. But also, if we, no one said anything about shrubs, can we just leave the shrubs under the poles, under the wires? It softens the look, it'll soften the look of this dramatic change to this beautiful historic rural scenic road. Thank you.
Welcome. Anyone else wish to do address the board? Hearing done, let's move on to item three, and that's approval of minutes. The May first, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting, is there a motion?
I'll move there.
Second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
I have one comment, item one says Ms. Habbert, I'll let the punch.
On a zoom.
How do I do with that correction? All right, is there, we have a question on the table, hence seconded. All in favor as approved, as amended, excuse me.
Aye.
Select one, row up.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Aye.
I got one, thank you. Item four, Finance Director, Mary Jane.
Good morning, how are we doing today?
We're great.
All right, starting with revenue?
Okay, so at the end of April, at eighty-three percent through the year, we are over a hundred percent collected. Most of the items we have already discussed, just wanted to reiterate with Park and Rec, I did speak to the Recreation Director, we are on track to bring in that revenue due to items coming along for this, this time of year at the beach. Otherwise, I don't really have any other comment. Oh, I guess what I'd like to note is on the selectment has minus, we have moved the opioid funding into its own fund. Using Family Services has put together a report of how that money will be spent. And actually, next week, I'm going to the GFOA National Conference in one of the webinars, or one of the meetings that I'll be seeing is, is how to account for the opioid money, so it's good timing.
Just as a side, we have allocated those grants to the services organization for prevention and treatment programs.
Yep, she's put together a proposal.
I responded to a GFOA question last Friday, Thursday or Friday. They were looking to see, someone was looking to see where we're, where this does, or allocate. Any other questions on revenues? You forgot to highlight how strong the finance department.
Yep, finance department is.
One thousand three hundred.
Seventy-five percent collected.
Wow.
Yeah.
The, the good news, that's all right. The, the good news is that's going to fall to fund balance.
It will, yes, and I, I have a new investment that I'm doing with Morgan Stanley through treasuries. That money is coming due every month, two, two million dollars every month, and I'm I'm planning to roll over that money instead of taking the interest out until such point where we might need that money to balance our budget, you know, for next year, but we're bringing in even more money than shows here, but it's just unrealized at, at that, at this point.
Are those new ones, those baby bonds we were talking about, short-term ones, is that what the new ones are?
No, it's treasuries, it's one-year treasuries. Yeah, I have ten million dollars in the treasury, so two million coming due every, every month. Yeah, so if we need money for liquidity, I have the option every, every month to.
Rolling it out.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So this is actually lower than what we're really bringing in.
We're talking about revenues and the possibility that it'll fall to fund balance, I believe there are copies of the audit, our annual audit in your inboxes here, okay?
Physical copy other than the PDF that you probably received.
There'll be a presentation at the.
No, that's already, they've already, yeah, but they only had the PDF copy at that point. The presentation's already been made.
Should have put on the record that it was clean and everything.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
It's on the board of finance, I guess.
Yeah, they've already had the presentation.
So, and fund balance, what, what percentage of fund balance?
Little over twelve. We have, which is now in between the ten and fifteen that we've amended the policy for.
Okay.
All right. Expenditures. So on the expenditure side, I have a few items to discuss. Wanted to know planning and zoning are at ninety-eight percent spent, but we fund the consultant that we have through our IT, the money set aside for IT, so at the end of the year, we will bring that money in to cover the cost of that, so that budget will not be over budget by the end of the year. Second one, I talked about before, but economic development, we have Madison payments that need to come and offset that. The golf, golf course is at ninety-seven percent expended, they do have revenue on the other side to offset that, but Sandy and I, Sandy or Freddie, my Sandy, are meeting with Ted this afternoon to talk about the budget and some other items for the golf course.
They only have, what, eighteen thousand in coverages, right?
Right.
Is that salaries or not?
No, it's not, it's not salaries, no, but we'll be talking about all, all of that, I know their maintenance and was, was high this year, so they said, gonna have a conversation, meant, I was supposed to have a conversation with them Friday, but I ended up not being able.
The last meeting was talking about delaying Jacob's Beach project, is that till later this year, or will that be hung over to next year?
The subject, it's more than, it's, it has been determined that we're going to move it beyond, beyond the start, getting it done.
I know we're delaying it now, are we delaying it till later this year, or is that going to be hung over to next year?
Next year.
Well.
It's gonna be next fiscal.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's right.
But it's, it's a capital project.
Yeah, that's a capital project, so it wouldn't affect, it does not going to affect the operating. And then I just want to mention the Health Department, they also have grants that will be coming in through the state to offset the overtime and extra man-hours needed still for COVID. So that, that, those grants are still coming in. And the last one is the Fire Department, they are ninety-two point seven percent spent, mainly due to being down two people and increased calls, Mike is here, you know, if you wanted to address that. As I tell you every month, I have a discussion with Chief and Deputy Chief every month, we're always looking at these numbers and making sure that we're applying everything we need, go ahead.
So, one of the biggest factors is that we, besides down two, we've also had two long-term workers comp injuries, so that's push replacement. The biggest factor is call volume, right now, we're at least a hundred, and we're projected to be close to four to five hundred calls over last year. So that increase, just like we were last year, was our busiest year ever, and we're continuing to push that, so that call volume and momentum, you know, requires replacement crews to come back when we're first ambulance, second ambulance, and maintaining staffing. So we're on course to be four to five hundred above last year for call volume.
Is there any trend in the nature of the extra calls?
I, I would say EMS or medical has been definitely a, a big driving factor, but all calls in general, any response, rescue, fire alarms, carbon dioxide detectors. There's been a variety of things, there's no one thing, I just think call volume is continuing to increase and increase, so. But as population or things come in and come out. Just, we're kind of, we continue to watch it every month, month to month, at the commission meetings, report out on it. We dipped down a little bit within the last month or two, but now we're coming into the summer, and the summer season usually, you know, increased people out on the road, increased activity.
When you say, is a lot of that transport at that point, are you depending on what the?
You mean in terms of transport EMS?
Transporting patients, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so transport EMS is.
That ends up being a reimbursable.
Yeah, well, also, I'll segue with that, the good news is we're up in revenue, we're, we're, we're way up, we're a hundred and thirty-five thousand above in our target revenue. And we, and, and that, and that direct impact of, yes, because that increase in billing and ambulance services, we're over a hundred and thirty-five, and we still have about two months to go. So we, we're planning on being way over on revenue, but with that, the replacement of salary crews is, is a direct correlation and impact to how that is reflected.
How is that affecting your response time, I mean, we're not having so many calls that it's affecting that.
So, so far, we're able to maintain response times within the parameters, you know, every month, they report out the commission meetings, average is about seven minutes throughout town, across the entire town. So making sure, and that's getting ninety percent of the time, we're getting ALS almost a hundred percent of the time, paramedics on scene within those seven minutes. Especially for EMS, it's really important, that's critical.
And then the other one, north Guilford, you know, situation probably is helpful keeping that down.
Absolutely, yeah, and having, obviously, the location of the ambulance there made a big impact on response times. Then the other, we have still the grants reimbursement, which we're working on, we finished our last training class under the Assistance to Firefighters grants, and we should be receiving about, I think, forty-four thousand back from the federal government for that class, which covered some salaries.
Yeah, that money came in in May, so it's not reflected in today's report.
Thanks, Mary.
All right, thank you.
All right. Expenses?
I do have a question, you mentioned that we don't have Madison's share of the, of whatever it was.
Reimbursement, sure, so.
Sure, so, all right, thank you, and I'm, I'm just thinking of the success you've had in investing the funds, we really shouldn't have to wait till the end of the year to get Madison's half of the money for the, for the past year, and I'm wondering about transfer station too, which is a larger amount.
So, so let me explain again about economic development, because I know I mentioned this a few months ago, but it might be, so what happened with Madison is in last fiscal year, they overpaid what they should have for last year, that money went into fund balance, so that we have money for most of the reimbursement. We bill them quarterly, so the money comes in quarterly, but we have the money in fund balance that at the end of the year, we will transfer back in. So, we just, we just told them that we would collect less from them and then use the fund balance. And that's how we, because they, we had a contract with them last year, and they paid off the total contract, but the contract started later, then anticipated, so they actually paid for a quarter that they had needed to, so it's.
And how about the transfer station, do you know offhand?
Well, the transfer station money is, the transfer station is now run through Munis and, and our, and our general fund. So that funding is already part of what, what we do.
But she said, I think you're mentioning, are we billing them on a monthly basis, or how do we, how do we, how do we recoup their contributions?
Quarterly as well.
I have one other question, I know we turned over the foundation is handling the ARPA funds and through grants and that type of thing, do, are we going to get any either report, I know they're right in the midst of grant applications and that type of thing, are we going to be involved at all in what those final grants are, not involved in them, but at least a report of what they are.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to know, we didn't turn over our funds.
I got it back as I started to say.
We have not, we have not turned over our ARPA funds to the foundation, we've allocated, we have allocated, go ahead, go ahead, I just wanted to make.
Yes.
I, I caught myself.
Our, our agreement with the, with the foundation is that they have to comply with the reporting requirements as defined by the American Risk Plan Act itself, so the answer is yes, they will.
So we'll get a copy of what?
Report to us so that we can report back.
Yeah, I just want, I know they're in the midst of, they're.
Yeah, they're in the midst of creating the application and, and the decision criteria, they anticipate rolling it out this summer, so, for awards in early fall, I think is their schedule, so.
Wasn't a criticism as much as I just wanted to make sure that, you know.
Well, it's actually, this is, it's Mary Jane who doesn't want to wind up in ARPA jail, because she's.
I'm taking you all with me.
And we, we know you're responsible.
I know people.
Mary Jane says she doesn't look good in the scrape, so.
I don't know, three meals a day.
Oh, that's a good.
That's right, don't have to worry about what I wear, not funny, I'm, I'm just kidding.
All right, any other?
That emphasizes why I'm concerned.
Any questions on the warrants? Get those tonight. Special fund, the medical.
So on the medical, for the month of April, our claims were one million, seven, one, one million, seven thousand dollars, which is a little bit lower than our normal monthly. Our total claims for catastrophic claims are up to three point three million dollars and five hundred and six thousand recovered, which is twenty-one point five percent of the total ISL, we are up. Thank you for coming right behind me. Four people overall that have reached the seventy-five thousand dollar limit, and we are up three people that have reached a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Revenue considers to, is consistent, and at this point, I have a projected surplus of three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Questions? Question I have, particularly as we talk about stop loss, we need updates from our insurance consultant finalized.
I have not heard anything, Mitch, are you on the line?
Mitch, we see you there.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here, yeah, no, I have it, and I'm going to be dialing the number as I, as we speak. See if we can get some effort, get, get an update.
Yeah, because it's typically around this year that we get the final numbers from our consultants, maybe even into June.
Right, and, and we had been told by our consultants that after April, the companies would be able to give us some, some numbers, so should be, we should be getting.
Right, because once, once they have the year-to-date.
Yeah, they need three quarters, yeah, they need three quarters, so they should have those numbers now, so hopefully, we'll be getting the, the quotes for the ISL very soon.
But not only that, the final cost, the anticipated cost for the coverage itself.
Yes.
All right. All right, anything else, or Mary Jane? Item five, Board of Director of Operations and Facilities, Cliff Gurnum, good morning, Cliff.
Good morning.
Item one is discussed to take possible action to contract with Johnson Controls for lighting control upgrades at Gopher Lakes School. Where is yours, Cliff?
Thank you very much, so this project consists of replacing all the manual time clocks, a couple of them have failed completely at Guilford Lakes, and putting them on to our building management system, so that includes the perimeter outside lighting, parking lot lights, as well as being able to program the tennis courts lights as well. The proposal was looked at by the Standing Building Committee and reviewed, and they recommended moving forward with the project with Johnson Controls in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Thanks, Cliff, any comments or questions? Cliff, just quickly on the, the, the lights, controlling the lights outside for the, the courts, I know that had been a, an issue with some of the, some of the neighbors both ways, how do we make sure they stay on for those who are utilizing the court to play tennis and/or pickleball? And then also, you know, having them off when no one's using, what, what does this capacity give us?
Right, so presently, the way it works is, hopefully, our, one of our custodian remembers to turn the lights on before they go home. And then the guy, last guy there is the responsible one to turn them off at the end of the night, so there's no automation on those presently. So by putting it into our building and management system, we can automate that, and then as part of it, we're looking at trying to put off a a manual override, so, you know, the lights would be capable of coming on, we'll say, from seven to ten, but they won't come on unless somebody hits the button at the court, so that way, we're not, you know, wasting electricity when people are not playing tennis. So it's kind of how we've done it most of the places, and Rick can kind of chime in, we do that at the high school, we've done that at Adams, at the basketball courts, so it works out well this way.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions? Is there, is there a motion to approve the award? For the comments question? Let me try my, select one, rule up.
Hi.
Those in the room?
Hi.
Hi, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, five dot two, consider and take possible action to contract, with Eastern Datacom for security enhancements at Adams, the Gopher High School, Lea, Lakes, Jones, and Cox Schools under the Sourcewell Contract, number zero two two seven one nine dash NBS, and the Pepham Contract numbered, five two eight eight nine seven dash one three nine. Uh, is there a motion?
Some.
Cliff?
Uh, thanks. So as you may recall, we did a pilot program at Baldwin Middle School by installing these systems. Uh, that has worked out really well. Been very impressed with the system. We've shown it to the police department, fire department. Uh, we've actually had other districts come in to want to look at it as well. Uh, so it's, it's really worked out well and enhanced our capabilities with communication, with both police and fire as well within the school. So we're looking to do similar systems in the balance of the schools, the other six schools throughout the district. Uh, this would incorporate upgrades to PA systems, phone system, lockdown systems, and clock slash signboards. So the proposals were reviewed by both the Board of Ed and the Standing Building Committee, and both have recommended moving forward with the projects with, Eastern Datacom, the amount of one million two hundred seventy-six thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I'm not laughing at you. A funny sound just came out of a cellphone here, so. Anybody have any questions from Cliff?
Got a big project for all the schools there. Is it all going to be simultaneous for all the schools, or?
Uh, our goal is to start all the schools over the summer, work in areas that we, uh, would have more difficult time doing during the school year, because it will push, uh, probably from the summer into the fall to do all these schools. Uh, so if we can get in and do the classrooms, like the phone systems in the classrooms, that way, uh, when school starts, we can still work on like the PA system, which mostly consists of the hallways and and common areas. Uh, so they also know that they'll have to shift to the second shift after school starts. So it is a big project, but we think we can take a good chunk of it over the summer.
As I recall from when you talked about this the first time, this is really an integration tool, right, that that that, uh, brings together all of these various devices or platforms. Uh, so this is a, this allows it to be on a common system. Is that my recollection?
Correct, it pulls all those pieces together and allows us to use them all, through what they call a lens system, which is a lockdown activation system, yep.
Great. Any further questions?
No.
Wonderful. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, we try your minds, select woman, uh, Ruah.
Hi.
Those in the room?
Hi.
Hi, that motion carries unanimously. Cliff, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, item six, Police Chief Butch Hyatt and Deputy Chief Massey is also online. Consider and take possible action on the purchase of Taser equipment from Axon Enterprises. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Right. Uh, Butch or Chris, who is going to handle this?
I'm going to turn this over to Chris. He also has Kirk Fasulo with him, who is our Taser master, so if there's any specific questions, he can answer those. Uh, so Chris, it's all yours.
All right. So in front of you, we have a request from Axon Enterprises, which is the company that services our Taser program here at the police department. Uh, I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Taser program. It's a less lethal, uh, tool that officers utilize for controlling subjects. So the program that we had in place previously when we purchased these was a five-year program, where the cost was spread out over that five years. Um, we have since gone past the five-year program, and now many of the items used for maintaining, the program to include cartridges and batteries have to be purchased à la carte. Uh, so that is the request in front of you is for, a number of cartridges, both duty cartridges and training cartridges. Um, just here where we have to train annually, and the certification requires, uh, multiple shots with the taser to show, demonstrate proficiency. And as well as the, uh, we're also asking for a number of batteries. On a daily basis, we actually have to do testing of the tasers to make sure that they're properly functioning, and that they have adequate battery to take out onto the road and, um, ensure that they're going to be in proper working order when, when and if they do need to be utilized. Um, so the request from this sole source provider is for eight thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Not sure if anybody has any questions.
Expressions? I do have one question. It's not necessarily related directly to approval of this, but when you talk about training, what, who are the recipients of the taser? Does that done on other, other people, or is it done on a test dummy, or how does that work?
So what we do is, when you go through the initial taser training, many of the officers have elected to experience the taser, including myself. Um, so that's part of your initial training, so that you understand how it affects, uh, a subject who's going to have the taser utilized on them. Uh, on an annual basis, we have a couple of different options. We have a, a target that we set up, a fixed target that we set up, that we can fire the, taser cartridge at, and that will demonstrate proficiency that way. We also have a suit that one of the instructors, like Sergeant Fasulo, might dawn for the training, and uh, will serve as a moving target in a, in generally in a scenario-based training. So there's a couple of different options, but uh, the the darts don't actually go into a live person when we're training. Uh, it'll either be the suit or that target.
Thank you, Chris. Anything further? All right, let me try your minds, select woman Ruah.
Hi.
Those in the room?
Hi.
Hi, that motion carries. Thank you, Chief and Deputy Chief.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care, have a good day. Uh, item seven, uh, Library Director Rob McCool, discuss and take possible action on budget changes to library project. Rob?
Hi, so I don't have too much new information. I believe we left it two weeks ago that there was going to be an investigation of the capital, existing capital funds. So I'm not sure, um, what the, if there's any update with that. Um, but in terms of the libraries funds, we could certainly repurpose, up to thirty thousand existing capital funds if necessary.
I'll, I'll admit that we have not really looked at the uh, the capital fund to realign or rearrange it. I did not have the opportunity to do that with Mary Jane, so I think at this point, uh, we still don't have a source to fund this with, right? That's the, that's the bottom line. Now, how does?
Uh, Mary.
I just want to know how how it affects if we end up having to delay this today.
Right.
How will it affect the timing of getting it done, and are there, it seems to me that there weren't big enough issues that we had to do it immediately, but sooner or better.
Rob, any concern on?
I'm a little bit concerned about um, the wage information changing on the quotes, but I I think overall, the the bigger concern is, um, if it possibly like to get it done this year, um, but it's not in such disrepair that we couldn't delay for another year if we had to.
Like year, he doesn't mean fiscal year, obviously. Uh, no, he means calendar year.
Yeah, it's more just like seasonal, like getting it done before the bad weather kicks in would be ideal. But if we can't, you know, we can do it next summer as well.
Um, hi, this is Sandy. Um, it seems to me that when we had this discussion two weeks ago, uh, I thought I heard Mary Jane say that she would, could come up with some funds to augment the increase in the cost of the entire project. I thought she said that. She didn't, say anything specifically, but I thought she indicated a positive note on the funds. Does anybody else remember that?
He did mention that there was funds in the, I guess, the facilities line. I'm not familiar with the technicalities. But um, and then I think it was Sue recommended that we reexamine the capital funds. And then Mary Jane, you know, told me to go ahead and get on the agenda for this week to keep the momentum going, but um, I don't know that any investigation was done.
Would it be appropriate for us today to, move it provisionally that you get together with Mary Jane and sort out the where?
I had no problem with that if you want a motion. Good. All right, is that a motion?
Yes.
A second?
Second.
Good. Uh, Mary Jane?
Uh, yeah, I apologize if I missed the beginning. Um, I had an issue with one of my staff members I was dealing with. Um, so I, uh, yes, Rob is correct. We do have funding in the facility line in fund balance, uh, that we could use for this project. I did supply for today, for today's meeting, a final, the approved capital budget for fiscal year twenty-four, which is what I was thinking Sue wanted to look at, to see if there was anything that could be moved around. I, I didn't myself look, look for that. At this point, I I really wasn't, didn't see anything that could be put off as maybe a couple of things that the library has if they wanted to, but other than that, it's hard to, hard to now turn around and tell department heads that they're not getting a capital line, because of the library roof, but I just wanted to confirm that we do have the funding in fund balance if you move forward in that direction.
Full amount? The full amount of the funding?
Well, they, he has a hundred thousand or ninety-nine, five, whatever in capital, so we'll use that first. The balance could be spent out of fund balance, correct?
Okay, so you have enough to cover the balance.
I want to make that, I want to make the motion to amend the motion to include the use of the fund balance as the, as the source.
Yes.
Okay. Second, uh, second, yes, right. Uh, any further comments or questions? Hearing none?
I just want to make sure I understand the the motion that just happened. Um, so we're, we're still going to wait for the next meeting or?
No, no, no.
Oh, we're, we're in the clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent.
This is good, this is good, this is good news, Rob.
Thank you.
All right, let me try your minds, select woman Ruah.
Hi.
Uh, those in the room?
Hi.
Hi, that motion carries unanimously. Charles?
I didn't want to get into, you know, the micromanaging of the decision to to stay with this. But, you know, it makes a, I struggle with it a little bit, but because it's right on the green like that, I, I, I can't make an issue out of it, but.
That's a lot of it, it is. I think, I think there's a combination. I think, I think Rob had mentioned that the slate, the differential in the slate materials, is only about twenty percent.
Right. That dealt the deal.
Yeah, that wasn't going to be saving, it was going to make or break the project.
And that combined with, the lifetime, the life use of roofs, I mean, yes, it's a lot of money today, divided by fifty years, thirty years.
More than that, right? How old is that roof, Rob?
It's nineteen thirty-three, so it's a.
Ninety years old. There'll, there'll be, there'll be a couple of generations of boards of select.
Yeah, I've had this discussion with other situations, you know. It's really strictly aesthetic. I mean, you would think because, you know, our, our movement, EVs and everything else, you know, we're keeping up with technology, but yet we're sticking with such old technology, uh, and a pretty important part of a building. I, I might, I, I think it's a generational issue. I haven't come around to, you know, are, are we supposed to be moving to the new, better technologies, or are we?
Or, or is this a case where this technology is better than anything else that's currently made?
You know, I, I haven't got my mind.
Yeah, having explored, you know, metal and different products, I I think this really is the most, the longest lifespan, um, what we're going for.
All right, well. Rob, congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Let's make it happen.
That's been on the discussion board for long, guys.
Well, it's a clean job, Chris. Item eight, Town Engineer Janice Blazek, uh, eight dot one is consider and take possible action to award bid number eleven dash twenty-two twenty-three, on-call construction of concrete sidewalks. Good morning.
Um, so our on-call bid is a number of unit pricing, so it's hard to really identify, you know, the lowest bid. Right off of that, so the way we've done it in the past and the way we did it this time is we have already a list of, uh, areas that need repair and replacement. Um, so Assistant Town Engineer Michael Chitirella went through and and measured all these locations and came up with, with the items that needed to be done, and I attached for you the summary of that, which showed, William Layden as the low based on, the calculations for what we are planning to do, and we have about sixty thousand dollars worth of work that we've identified that needs to be done, short-term, uh, based on complaints for broken sidewalks in front of houses, flipping hazards we know of, some upgrades to handicap ramps still associated with Boston and Water Street paving project that's slated by the state, I believe, in September at this point. Um, so looking at all that, uh, we looked at, and also the fact that, uh, on the other page that I submitted, uh, which were the bid tallies, uh, Layden also did give us the option for renewal with a two percent increase each year. Uh, some chose not to give us a renewal, or, you know, it was three and a half percent for the other Layden, and one other said we had to negotiate it. So, um, you know, with those combined factors, I I believe that William, uh, Layden Construction is the best value for the town going forward, and I would recommend that we would award that to them, and approve about sixty thousand dollars in work to be done in the short term.
Layden is a familiar name. Who is the president?
So there's two Laydens, the one, yeah, so the one that we've had on contract for the past three years, because it's a renewable contract for three years, uh, was William Layden Construction. They're also the ones who just completed the sidewalk project, which was separately bid for Boston Street Extension. Um, the other Layden Industries is a cousin. They're cousins that split, two years back, it used to be Elmer Layden Construction, and then the two families split into William Layden and Layden Industries. I believe Layden Industries, I haven't worked directly with Layden Industries, um, but they have bid in the past. It bid last time they bid.
So this Layden is the Layden that we.
We use, yeah.
I thought I was trying to get.
Yeah, and that's.
Two Layden.
Yeah.
I just want to.
Yeah, Layden Industries, I believe, did the parking lot construction behind Whitfield Street and Block of Water, uh, for the town years ago, and, um, you know, obviously, we've had good experience with William Layden Construction as well, so.
Yeah, just, it was interesting that the other three bidders were all very close. You know, and, and William Layden, wouldn't that stand out? Not remarkable.
Yeah, yeah, he definitely went low on the, um, the, the mainstay of the bid, which is the sidewalk. Um, pricing at eleven dollars and seventy cents per square foot.
Your recommendation was like William.
William Layden. Second? Second. Uh, any further comments or questions? Uh, just a comment, um, the, speed which William Layden completed the project from Oliver Cemetery up to Route One. When you compare with what was done, I know, I know seventy-seven is a little different route than one forty-six, but they, they were amazingly efficient.
Yeah, they just dedicated resources to the project and just had it done, um, you know, because they want to move on and do their next project.
And I just want to comment for the record, it gave the Renter family the opportunity to put a new mailbox up. With a Snoopy character.
Yeah, like, we coordinated with their new driveway, and yeah, took down some trees, put up some new trees. As we did with other, you know, others along the route. No, it came out great. We walked it on Friday for measuring, and I expect them to finish up the pavement markings and signage, uh, hopefully this week with their subcontractor coming in, and the hydro蓄ing to be done as well, so almost, almost completely there.
Great, great job. One last question. Uh, that was paid for by a grant, was the connectivity?
Yeah, so it was mostly paid for by, we're, we're, we're putting in about a hundred thousand of our own fund balance monies that we allocated a while back, knowing that we were going to be kind of short to get all the way to Route One, and we just decided that we would allocate some town funds to the project as well. And, uh, as we discussed last time, we're already looking at the next section, um, and kind of, I'll come to you to see if you want to go ahead and apply for that and extend, and where, where we want to end. For massaging kind of options is to go into the first horseshoe or the second horseshoe, or maybe even right now, the connectivity grants. They used to be capped at like three hundred thousand or some lower amount, and we had gotten two eighty-something for this project on Boston Street so far. Um, but I believe this year, they're allowing you to go up to like eight hundred thousand. Um, so, you know, there may be enough funds to go all the way to the town line and be so choose if you want to apply for that grant.
Given the level of interest that's been expressed by residents. Given the level of interest that's been expressed by uh, residents in Sunrise. And their excitement about having gotten it to where we got it to, I'd say we're probably gonna move forward. And we've talked about that.
My vote would be to go right to the bridge, you know, we're gonna go there someday, if you don't want it to.
Yeah, I would say if you're gonna buy the bullet, um, there's a.
Maybe it could looks like there's gonna be more stores over there at some point in time.
Yeah, I did receive one phone call of, of a person concerned with, you know, impacts to trees in that area. And so I, I, I advise them to reach out to you folks, so, you know. Uh, I think technically by the ordinance, we should probably uh, have a, I think it's a public hearing, or, you know. If there's a process to extending and building new sidewalks, um, you may not have completely followed it with the last one, but uh, you know, you guys certainly approved the project. Um, so we may want to look into that, how we pursue that.
Great.
Do you happen to know if Madison has done anything about their side from where we continue?
No, so if you recall, years back, there was kind of plans between the two town engineers to try and use the uh, Greenway. Uh, funds to, to connect the two towns as much as possible with sidewalks. Um, in that stretch of Route One, but I'm not aware of uh, what, if anything, Madison is doing with their allocation. Their allocation was a separate al- uh, uh, allocation as an earmark, because they're a separate congressional district. I know we turned back our funds, uh, and that was, I believe, allocated to East Havens, um, system of uh, the Greenway trailer. Sidewalks or something. Um, but I, as far as I know, it's still sitting in Madison, just not used. Yeah.
I don't know if that would be in our lifetime, it would be neat to connect to him, that's it.
Um, I have a, a question for Janice, it's not related to sidewalks, but recently in the Courier, there were letters about the um. The intersection with Tanner Marsh and Goose Lane, and the people that wrote the letters didn't seem to be aware that. You have already brought this up for discussion, and I believe, I just thought we could take this opportunity. Isn't this under, isn't this a project that you are already working on to improve that um, melding of those two streets?
Is this Tanner Marsh and Goose Lane intersection?
Yeah.
That, that would be part of the Goose Lane reconstruction project, which we have lots of funding for. We're just starting design on that right now.
Right, I just thought it would be, uh, take this opportunity to say that this is on the town's um, to-do list in some way or another. Cause it, the letter sounded like we weren't thinking about it, but we are thinking about it, correct?
I think there are two projects here. This is uh, adding a four-stop sign on that intersection of Tanner Marsh and Clabber Hill. Coming from the east, there is uh, no uh, stop sign coming east, and residents are, have expressed concern to my office.
Oh, okay, I thought it was the one where the roads met near the cemetery, the Nut, I'm sorry, Nut Plains. Nut Plains and Tanner Marsh maybe is what I meant, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, looking at that with the, the police uh, chief today, actually, we're, you know, cause that, that's going before the. Um, police commission, who's the lo- local traffic authority, who makes decisions of whether or not a stop sign should be added or not.
Okay.
Strange, there's one stop sign. One direction.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think part of it has to do with sightline challenges. Um. Uh, there's a hill and a curve on Clabber Hill Road, so coming north on Tanner Marsh at the stop sign, there's limited visibility. So I believe, I believe, it's not, I didn't research this, but I believe they forced the stop on Clabber Hill. Which probably should be the through road, given the volumes of traffic, something, you know, opposing roads here.
Seemed awkward.
But I think they put a stop sign there because of the limited sight lines for the people who are stopped at Tanner Marsh to be able to safely go through that intersection. Uh, but left the other one unstopped, um, so the decision will be made whether or not a fourth one should be added. I don't think we could take one away in that, that scenario, cause I think you're gonna see limited sight lines, but we're gonna look at that today.
And I think, as you mentioned, it's actually, I think it's on the police commission's uh, agenda for Wednesday night.
Oh, yeah, I know they received the requests already, and are, are looking into, uh, you know, a lot of things go into this, it's accident data, it's.
You get simple when you drive it once.
Yeah.
You know, every six months, but, because it is an awkward intersection.
Well, again, and, and, you know, I think, you know, the rule of thumb engineering wise is you either have a four-way stop at a four-way intersection, or you have a two-way stop. With one road being the through movement. These oddball three-way stops at a four-way intersection usually come about for some reason. And maybe, you know, need to be reevaluated at times.
That's right. Chief, I see you're uh, back on video, uh, did you want to comment?
Uh, I was just uh, backing up what Jana said, and, and we are meeting out there later today, and it will be on the agenda, it is on the agenda for uh, for Wednesday night.
Great, okay. All right, all right, we can finally get to the question. What was it, what was the question? So the sidewalk contract to William Layden, uh, and we have a motion and a second on the table, but let me try your mind, select woman Ruoff.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries, thanks.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Item nine, fire chief Charles Sersha, deputy chief. Nine dot one, discuss any possible action to contract with tactical communication, single cap radio project.
As the board is aware, good morning, as the board is aware, this is a uh, project to upgrade all the public safety agencies in town. Fire, Public Works, Police, et cetera, park and rec, in the radios. And we're just gonna lock in the equipment pricing, because the quote is good to June thirtieth, and we're gonna use state contracts. And, and the market is so volatile, so we need to move along.
Great, and this is uh, for the project for which we have uh.
Three million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, ninety-six cents.
Right, and for which, uh, we have received the uh, notification from Congresswoman Dolores Office. That this is going to be included in the um, congressionally directed spending for uh, the uh, fiscal year. I think it's the twenty-four, uh, twenty-four fiscal year.
With the good work of Captain Havencamp.
Yeah, that was this kind of mention, so, great. Uh, and again, this is off state contracts, so.
State contract, right.
Great, uh, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it, but I did have a question. So, so the first one, what does it mean by central voters and satellite voter?
Those are basically how the radio systems receive, it sorts out the signals and sends them through.
I'm beginning to word voter, what is that?
Voters is how they, it votes which single, which one's the song is one that's.
Oh, it selects, right?
Interesting.
Oh, I've moved it anyway.
Is her sexy?
Sexy.
We just thought it was under reference.
Right.
Uh, what, when, when do we anticipate starting this project?
Uh, the lead time on the equipment is about three to four months.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a while before we get moving.
And does Tactical do all the work themselves, or do they sub out some of the work?
No, they do all the work themselves, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, let me try your mind, select woman Ruoff.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much, good luck. Item ten, Public Works Director, Parks and Rec Director. And then it's ten dot one, consider to take possible action to contract with National Roofing for the replacement of the roof on two picnic pavilions at Jacob's Beach. Rick?
So um. Our pavilions are both, uh, I think they were built in mid to late nineties, so the roofs are twenty-five years old mostly. One of them actually was some of the boards, or at least one of the boards actually rotten, you can see daylight showing, so there's a hole in the shape of it, we're just starting to rot. We're, we're under the gun here to get it done, because I looked through um, what's available. You know, the contractor needs two days in a row to, to get it done, to do both roofs. And in June, we have two, two days, that's it, June fifth and sixth, June uh, nineteen and twenty. All, all the rest of it, every other day is booked with picnic, uh, rentals, pavilion rentals. In May, I'm hoping you can start maybe next week, uh, May, all next week is available, twenty-second through to twenty-six. There's no, no scheduled reservations there. I'd ask Sean, if my office does reservations, to hold on, hold off. And a hold off those two, four dates in June, and then we have to go into June for it. Um, but obviously, I gotta get it done before camp starts, before we get to, uh, well, we are in heavy picnic season already, really. Um, so we got four, four quotes, um, National Roofing was the lowest at ten thousand, six hundred and twenty. Um, the highest was Greenwood Roof Solutions, sixteen thousand, four fifty. Um, and we, we want to go with National Roofing, number one, they're the lowest quote, um, but they also gave us a uh. In their quote, they had a six hundred and fifty dollar estimate for wood. The other companies didn't even provide that, there was, the wood replacement would be on, on top of that. Uh, and also their hourly rate for labor for replacement is seventy-five dollars per hour versus the other ones were a hundred and ten, a hundred and twelve dollars an hour. So, uh, you know, the price is definitely good. Uh, we talked to Jeff, um, Beaman, and he's uh, um. Ready to order some, I think he has actually started ordering some of the supplies, assuming. I'm gonna go forward here, and um, because I, I just didn't want to push it off. And we can't get it done, so kind of. It's emergency, urgency at least, at very least urgency to get it done. Uh, so the purchase order would be eleven thousand five hundred, I just put a, an estimated number in there for labor. Um, and I think we can go up to ten percent over if we need to, um, but it's still gonna be lower, because the other one's quote on. Uh, the labor was a hundred and ten dollars per hour versus seventy-five for him.
Got it.
So his quote was ten thousand.
I'm sorry.
Are they taking the old roof off?
Yeah, they take it off, and they have to, cause some of the boards are, we know some are on it, we don't know how many are. Um, and so he, his allowance was for uh, twenty, ten-foot boards.
Yeah, sometimes they just put it over and that's, oh, yeah, it's not good.
Yeah. Right, that's all, I'll move it, just keep it your schedule up.
Uh, Sue, second.
Second.
Uh, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your mind, select woman Ruoff.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, you know, asleep.
Thank you very much. Nobody likes to get shingles.
Oh, yeah, we. There it is, just hanging out there for you.
You notice I kind of walked back a question in, and struggled to get it in.
We just got um, a request for unattended display on the green. Add it to, for May twenty-sixth.
Yes, will.
All right, I'm gonna copy for everyone else.
Okay. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning.
How are you?
All right.
Eleven dot one is to consider and take possible action, uh, to contract with All Habitat Services LLC off the state contract. For the treatment of aquatic invasive plants in Lake Quanapod, Kevin?
So, we're just part of our lake management plan for Lake Quanapod, we're planning on doing treatments again this summer. Like, um, All Habitat Services has provided us a um, quotes for doing the work. Uh, within the quotes, they gave us for three different treatment times per this year, uh, we're currently looking at like doing the uh, the June-July treatment. We basically missed the um, April treatment due to um, permitting, we're, and we're still waiting for a permit to come. Come through, uh, and the um, subcommittee that we have, which oversees Lake Quanapod, uh, conservation commission. Uh, that, that this time doesn't feel like we need to do the um, um, August treatment there with the cler cast. Cler cast is actually the replacement product for bisopate. And that's for um, more plants that kind of grow from the top and kind of get in the way, the contact type of treatment here. Um, this year, um, you know, some prices higher than before, is there, committee's looking at moving on to a different product, which we're hoping for better results. Which is sonar, um, it comes in a tablet form and also a liquid form for treatments there. And we're hoping to get some better um, improved um, results in our treatment, which hopefully would reduce the amount of chemicals in the future, where we can actually. Right now, we're just kind of keeping up with the current um, treatment policy, and we're hoping to actually um, move forward and hopefully. Um, reduce the populations even further and faster, and each year be more of a maintenance operation. Um, than what we've been doing in terms of just trying to fight them back each year.
Yeah.
Um, so this, right now, we're currently requesting thirty-five thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents for the uh, summer treatment with that sonar.
Great.
Product there.
Kevin, uh, did we get the, the recent grant?
We are in the process of locking down the grant there, the uh, grants, uh, we did put in for the May. The summer treatment period there, um, I'm after with the grant, see if we can then, I think it's an eighteen-month period. Uh, where maybe you'll just treat the summer, include May into the reporting there, or you can almost hold off and do one big year. Um, treatment talk with you, which um, to find out the best method of using our funding. Uh, we did receive a grant of, for uh, roughly the um. Thirty-five thousand dollars, not the exact number in front of me, but roughly that, I think it's like thirty-nine thousand, I think we got the grant for. Uh, which actually covers some of the costs for the inspections and, um, from the uh, ag station.
Yes.
Including that, so we're, we do have that grant, it's a fifty-fifty um, grant that we ended up going in with the um. Uh, funding for the D E P for.
Yeah.
You said we missed one permit, and we're still waiting for.
We did one sampling period, cause we're waiting for the permit, we've been, we were delayed in getting our first. Um, review letter, which goes with the permit, which is the N D B B review, we put it in November, October, November.
Do you think we're gonna have the permits in time for this?
I'm gonna be contacting them to find out, cause they, they're, they indicated about a month for the permit to be issued, when we turned it in. And we're beyond that period now, so we'll be contacting the state to see where our permit stands for our. June, July sampling, we want to try to get the uh, program started before the um. The summer season happens there with swimming and boating and a lot of activities.
Pretty close. Yeah, Kevin, Kevin, please, uh, copy me on anything you said, um, I'll be happy to, uh, reach out to Commissioner Dykes. Uh, as I've developed a relationship over the last several years with the government, so be happy to see if we could spur a little action.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, uh, is there a motion to approve, uh, approve the contract?
So.
In a second?
Second.
Uh, any further comments, questions? Hearing none, let me try your mind, select woman Ruoff.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously, thank you. Uh, eleven dot two, discuss and take possible action to set a town meeting, June fifth, at eight fifteen A M. At the Cooper Town Hall, via Zoom, acceptance of a conservation easement located on the George Spencer subdivision, eight seventy-two Nut Plains Road. Sessions map ninety-two, lot fourteen, Kevin?
So this is a um, planning zoning, a month ago approved, a subdivision. Uh, three lots, subdivision, Nut Plains Road, eight seventy-two Nut Plains Road as part of it. Um, there was a conservation commission, uh, uh, conservation easement, which was requested, replaced on a property by the, you know, Walons Commission. Which planning zoning commission approved, is just over two acres, two point three acres, conservation easement. This conservation easement, actually, part of the reason they went for it, we've been kind of backing away from receiving these things for conservation easement. But this one is attached, um, connects to an existing easement from a previous subdivision. Um, Sunset Meadows, uh, which was recently built over the past uh, five, six years. Uh, left the corner of uh, Stepstone Hill Road and Nut Plains Road, uh, which had a conservation easement, so this one. Attaches into that and helps protect that wetlands, um, structure in that area there.
All right, uh, Mr. Spencer was actually in my office last week, asking uh, how, if we could move this along, um. The um, easement document itself, Kevin, uh, I know you've indicated that was going back and forth.
I sent the new one, cause I sent the, Dylan's office, semi-easement, which I looked at, which wasn't our standard easement documents, I sent it back, ours back to them.
Right.
I haven't seen anything come back from them, but I don't expect anything really much for changes or update on it, since it's pretty much our standard.
So, so the copy we have here was this?
Is what was sent to them.
To, to Attorney Dylan.
Attorney Dylan, so this is correct, and I kind of passed that on to, to the times commission members, kind of curious what's involved in these um. Uh, board members, kind of, what's involved with these easements, I kind of want to pass on to you guys, what's.
Great.
What's protected on, and what they have a lot of uses for.
All right, so.
It is the eight fifteen versus the eight.
Okay, eight fifteen, so.
Eight fifteen, I think, six is the.
June fifth.
Okay.
June fifth, right, so is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second, further comments or questions? Let me try your mind, select woman, uh, Ruoff.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, item eleven dot three, consider to take possible action on a recommendation from the Land Acquisition Commission. That the town accepts a coastal access easement shown as part of the Anna Maria Vizio Nat subdivision of Lee's Island Road. Assessors map number nineteen, lot thirteen, subject to town meeting, uh, Kevin?
So this is a subdivision, which is currently underused by the planning and commission on Lee's Island Road. The, part of the approvals, we kind of missed the procedural part on this last one we just discussed. Is that before planning and zoning can approve. any easements from the town's name. Part of their activities, they need a letter from this board of selectmen saying that the uh, representative body for the town is indicated that we're towns interested in taking on that that easement. This one here is for a coastal access easement at the crabbing the eastern portion of this subdivision adjacent to the crabbing area. Just for people listening, doesn't know the subdivision. This is a subdivision of a three lot subdivision which expands the area just east of the, actually, excuse me, just west of the crabbing area where the little pole off for parking is and continues all the way up to almost across the street from the Leach Farm and buildings on the western side there. Spends pretty good distance there and the subdivision has a lot of tunnel wetlands with it. Which they're looking at doing any easement or turn over that area to a nonprofit. But that's not part of the this commission's or this board's review. It's just the public access area, which is at the eastern side, right near the parking area, and it provides access right down to the the marsh there. Gary and I about a week ago did go out and walk this area and confirm that there actually is a safe access area there. It's just not an open sea area and we did confirm that there is connecting to the marsh area that people can go down and enjoy that area.
And in your packet, so the Land Acquisition Commission voted to make a recommendation that we do accept such with the condition of the driveway, lot number three, it's not conflict with existing parking for the crabbing area. So I think anything in our motion would have to so I do have a question, Kevin. I don't know whether this is for you to answer or maybe Gary or both or maybe Pete. By taking this action to accept this recommendation from the Land Acquisition Commission to accept this easement that no way indicates the board's support for this application, which has become somewhat of a lightning rod in portions of the community. It's considered, I would call it controversial at this point. And I do not want this to appear as if the board selectmen is putting their collective thumb on the scale of how planning and zoning should handle this application. So I think whatever motion we make, it's clear that we are not weighing in. However, what we are saying is if they are, if this is subdivision is approved, we will accept the easement with the conditions that we just listed. Is that fair?
I think you got it right there.
Why does it require us doing this at this time then?
The planning zoning subdivision regulations require that
Prior approval.
Prior to approval that it's, they're going to land to the town that the town would accept. Managers say we'll be willing and accepting this piece here. If they're handing over land to a land trust, they want to make sure there's a letter that they're, they're willing to take it versus some developer saying, I'm going to pass this to this agency and find out these people really don't want it. It has
Would us not, would us, this board not accepting? Would us not accepting this be an indication of not
approving the project. Well, it's an open space subdivision. So this is, this is, they have to, they have to give the land to somebody, right? They have to grant an easement to someone in order to qualify.
Well, just to your point, I, I, you know, in one respect, you know, without especially without seeing the whole package and knowing that there are more than a few issues at hand here. To your point about the appearance of this board accepting this project moving forward, is there do we have any option of not presenting the appearance of approval of this project?
I, I think with the conditions we've listed, that this is conditional upon Derek, upon a condition on planning and zoning's decision relative to an open space subdivision.
And this public access area is part of the CAM application part, subdivision part of it. It's a CAM application part of it, which is.
I think, I think by not accepting it, we are putting our finger on the scale because we are saying we're not taking it. We're not taking the easement.
Okay, so there is no really neutral way at this point.
I think I mean, it's procedural. You know, we've looked at it from the, from the acceptance.
If it were to go forward.
If it were to go forward, that's, you know, we've put a couple of conditions on it. And if we were to say just, no, no, I, I think Matt's correct. It would be
This board make.
This board influencing P and Z negatively.
I think
I just wanted to sort it out.
And I think the group says no, it might be an indication also to the town that this, that the town's not interested in providing public access to this area. And this is, I mean, that's to me is what is mind you, that we're not interested in public access. We say no, that's southern is going to prove and then you're
No, no, I would, I would I would perceive if there was a way to do it, if there was a way to remain neutral, I would perceive that if it got approved, that would accept it.
I, I think This will come back to the board when it gets ready for acceptance and the the deeds get written for then filing on the land records.
There has to be, there has to be a town meeting to officially accept this easement.
Right.
So this is sort of like a preliminary intention.
And I sorry, thank you. I think Matt, a few sentences back, said it eloquently. And if, if it gets documented in the minutes, the way that Matt said it, I think you covered both sides of this issue so that we can go forward with what is being asked of us today and still be, be as neutral as possible, but accept the open space.
I have a question about the logistics of our, if we decide to accept this with a condition. So obviously it wasn't offered to us with that with that condition. We're saying, yeah, we'll take it if you move it a little bit farther over. Is have, do you, do you have a feel for whether that condition would be acceptable?
She, at the last planning zoning commission, the engineer indicated that there's the whole discussion regarding the driveways and safety and stuff there. They did indicate the um, that they would be looking to relocate this further towards the west.
It's just common. It's ridiculous to have an easement without access for parking. So I mean, it was, it was just kind of a common sense. You know? If you're going to put the driveway in a way that impacts the parking lot that's there, you gotta, you gotta come up with something else so that we could get to it.
And do we have a motion? Not yet. In a second. Soup second.
Yeah, second.
And just to for clarification purposes. The public access area that we have today. Who owns it?
Where the people are, where the cars are parked are in the straight state right away.
Okay.
When the people walk down into the woods and stuff like that and sit there and then kind of then walk from the woods to the edge of the the marsh here, that's private property owned by this.
Oh, but so this is actually protecting access.
It's protecting the existing access that's currently happening here.
Yeah.
That's a stretch calling that parking.
All right. Let me try your mind. Select woman Ruoff.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries you unanimously. Thank you. Well done.
Before Kevin leaves, you might want to ask him about the recent grant that was, we were notified of.
Kevin?
Yes, where was she?
Straight, the straight man just gave you.
The town actually, we were fortunately received notice last Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, that the town did receive the space grant for the Ballast Tracy property. So we can reverse about a little over half the money we put out for the property. I think we got a hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Hundred and seventy-six, two, we paid three twenty-five. So it's a fifty-four percent grant.
Terrific.
So we got money back to help support that purchase and money go back into the, assuming back into lending at this account.
Excellent. Excellent.
I, I would just make one cut. This is an obscure process as to how you come up with fifty-four point two or hundred and seventy-six point two, but it, it would appear to be substantially above some of the other grants. Probably because it was a joint request involving land trust land, town land, and it's an inholding for an existing open space. So I, it would appear that they gave us some extra credit in that process because of the the nature of this particular inholding.
Great. Thank you, Gary. All right. Congratulations on securing that.
He still has work to do.
There's always follow up to him, but.
Thank you, Kevin. Item twelve, Director of Human Resources, Mitch Goldback. Mitch, come on in. This is regarding our decision to officially grant the cost of living adjustment for pensioners. And as may recall, and for those who are new to this, we had included about a hundred thousand dollars in funds in reserve personnel in the budget that was recently approved with the intention that we would grant a COLA if the budget passed and survived, well, first off, survived the Board of Finance and then secondly, survived the referendum. Thankfully it survived both. So Mitch has been working as to what the actual amount was. At one point we thought it might be more like two point nine percent increase, but I think we're back to the two point eight, Mitch.
Yep.
Excuse me, um, excuse me, I just wanted to say that I'm present at the meeting, but I'm recusing myself from the discussion and the vote since I am a pensioner of the town.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks, Andy. Matt led in with all the information that's really necessary. With that, I've worked with Milliman, who is our actuary to come up with the exact amounts for each individual. At two point eight percent, it comes out to ninety-eight thousand one forty point zero eight. However, in looking back at the approvals we've done in the past for COLAs, it said, however, no, no increase would be less than fifteen dollars. If you keep to that, there's about thirty people that would increase a little bit more than what their cost of living would be from two point eight percent and still leave us below the hundred thousand dollar mark. So what I need from you, if you so desire, is a motion to approve a cost of living adjustment effective. Basically a cost of living adjustment for all retirees retired by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. They're receiving monthly pension provided with respective approved, approved pension plans. And then no less than fifteen dollars per person. The reason I put it in has provided the respective approved pension plans. There are a couple of caveats for a couple of people that are joint survivor or survivors and they're not, or they're divorcees who have received a pension. There are a couple of cases through some quirky laws that they're not entitled to a cost of living adjustment. Uh, it's only a couple of people. But Milliman has gone through this with a fine tooth comb and given me the list of who is eligible, which is just about everybody. And then we also need a paysing with American up to about eight hundred and seventy-five hours to make all this happen. They provide us with the, the actual checks. They have to load in all the information, the changes, test it first and make sure that all happens. So and then we will, I will come back to you at some point with actual amendments to each of the three pension plans back to just memorialize what you're about to do if you are to do that.
Great.
Any questions?
Do you have a feel for let's say approximate, not average, what the actual dollar amount this is to the.
Could be anywhere from a minimum of fifteen dollars as we just discussed or less if you decide not to do that part of it. An increase you know, up to the largest one here, about two hundred and thirty, two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
One, twenty-five.
And for those of you outliers that are, you know, very high pensions, you know, most of them are less than a hundred dollars a month.
And you said that there were a couple that might not be eligible for some reason by a couple, by a few.
Yeah, there's a couple of laws about when someone receives a pension based on whatever the divorce decree is. Sometimes they're not specifically not entitled.
Oh, so that was going to be a great, a good word. Okay. And by a couple couple of me is two, what I mean is ten or?
No, it's about, it's about four or five, I think.
And what is the total number of pensioners that this has effect?
Uh, I can give you an approximate number. So I didn't do a total there, but it'll be about fifty-four retirees from the police department, about forty-three people from the town side and about seventy-four people from the border edge side.
So it's about a hundred and seventy-five people total.
Yeah, probably a little bit less than that for you. Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Good.
A motion. It says there are motion to approve the cost of living adjustment for all current retirees retired by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one and are receiving monthly pensions provided by and respecting the group plans in the amount of two point eight percent.
I'll move it. Do you have one other question?
Now, fifteen dollars a person or not? Did you call which?
That's, that's, that's statute.
No, that's not, that's not statute. That, that's what was in our, our plans from the prior. It's a statute. I, I, if you do want to make that a minimum of fifteen dollars a person, I will put that in the motion.
Well, I'll add that. Although I thought it was provided by the respective approved pension plans. Wouldn't that fifteen dollar minimum be?
Not, not, not till you actually do the amendment that says it this time.
So that is included in my.
At the moment, it could be less, it could be less than fifty.
Just one more little question. That's my motion. Okay. Move on to second floor. Going forward, I mean, that, you know, we put a referendum in and we made a decision this year, but the general I believe the general consensus my thought process was that this would set a precedent for going forward, a way to handle this going forward. Is that still accurate or? We don't have a decision to do it on an annual basis, but we do have a procedure for doing it at least, right?
Procedure for looking at it every other year. So, you know, that's, that's where that's at.
I mean, it's a cumbersome procedure, but it was the best we have available.
But the board select decides the two years from now is up to the board select in two years.
But we set a precedent of how to do it because there's a struggle about the mechanics of doing it.
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Anything further? Nope. Let me try your minds. Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Everyone. That motion carries you in. No, no, yes, it does.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Karen?
Sandy, I emailed you a copy of this request.
Okay, thank you.
Oh. Yeah. All right. Let's move on to appointments and notifications. All right. Thirteen dot one, act on a recommendation to move Rich Evans from alternate to regular member on the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Is there a motion?
So would.
And a second, second. Let me try your mind. Select, select woman Ruoff.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thirteen dot two, act on a recommendation to appoint Jody Lang to the Human Rights Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Okay. So we're going to be reappointing her very shortly. Like, assuming Jody is, but is there a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Uh, a second. Let me try your mind. Select woman Ruoff.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Uh, request for use of town property.
Should we add this one?
Yeah.
Is the Oh, that we add women and family life. Wonderful.
These requests. Is there a second? Let me try your mind. Select woman Ruoff on the adding to the agenda. As
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Let's move to fourteen dot one then, act on request of the Guilford Pride to place a sign on the Green Advertising, its pride event is May twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion? I'll, I'll make the motion.
Second.
And any comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Select woman Ruoff.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Fourteen dot two. Request from women and family lives for. Animal sculpture. Display. And a second?
Second.
Just any comments other than the fact that I'm thrilled to see the process by which this is happening. This is, this is how it was intended, once it became apparent that this was something that has been wildly successful. So, uh, any other comments? Let me try your minds, second one, Ruah.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
If we didn't give you still, what kind of animals?
Tipping his hand on this one.
Good.
Great. That's.
There's not going to be a surprise now.
Well, yeah. Uh, committee reports. Correspondents. Old business, I think we already talked about the only thing, the update that I would have had would be EverSource on the EverSource project. Anybody have any, anything else I want to say on that? No? Alright, new business. Alright, public forum. And prior to going into executive session, so public forum. Name an address for the record, please.
Cynthia Dayber at four forty Great Hill Road. I didn't have any prepared statements, but. In reference to what you said at the beginning, I approve wholeheartedly of the town sending a letter to Great Hill Road residents. I would include Long Hill Road on that as well. And I would also include the residents, if we get information from EverSource that this project. Will then go all the way up Great Hill Road to where it intersects with Route seventy seven, and then continue north on Durham Road to the Guilford Line. Because if they're talking about completing a circuit. I mean, they can't just end there. What good would that do if they ended at the top of Great Hill Road? They would have to make it go somewhere. So I would send that letter to all residents on that proposed completed circuit, whatever they have in mind, which we don't know yet. One of the things I do want to point out is that. From Route eighty up going north, you have three roads. That connect to Route seventy seven. They are Elm Street, County Road, and Hemlock Avenue. Those three only. Once you get north of Hemlock, which would include where I live on Great Hill. There's many, many miles of road to take you up to Route seventy seven without any side streets. So if they're intending to close Great Hill Road at all to do this. You're going to talk about people going like ten miles. To go, to try to get where they need to go. There aren't any roads that take you anywhere up there. Also, what Erin O'Hara was saying, I reiterate, our Baltimore Oreos arrived last Thursday. Baltimore Oreos nest in high branches of trees very frequently. Over, hanging over a road. I don't know why, but that's how they intend to nest, and they're the tall trees. And these are exactly the trees that EverSource wants to cut down over the power lines. So I would really urge you, I mean, I have, I counted, I brought the list of birds in my yard, there are twenty nine species of birds that. We, we feed them, we see them. I've got documented sightings of all these kinds of birds, but I'm particularly concerned about the birds that are flying back and forth across the road. So if we can delay the tree cutting until after the bird nesting season, that would be hugely important. And Erin is right, we are losing birds. So, uh, the other comment I wanted to make was not about this project, but about the. Approved project over on West Street for the two point two miles. They did nothing, EverSource did nothing with the poles or the wires there. Zip, old poles, bare copper wire, all they did was cut down all the trees. You know? That's all they did. And the devastation over there. I mean, that is also a designated scenic road. And you can't argue with the fact that it's no longer scenic there. So. How could they, how could they get away with that? It boggles my mind. And I know they made a presentation, but it sounds good on paper, but when you go see what they did, it's heartbreaking. My section of Great Hill Road from Meeting House Hill, north to where the sawmill goes in. Already has three strands of thick tree wire. The, uh, the section from. Route eighty and Long Hill Road does not, it has very much thinner wire. So for whatever it's worth, I still want to reiterate that all these power outages. EverSource really needs to document, because so many times I've driven down the street and there's a dead tree that's fallen across the road. I mean, this has happened all the time, and that's why we've had so many power outages. They, they haven't trimmed the trees in at least five to seven years. During which time, all the ash trees have died, and that section was lined with ash trees and they're falling down one by one across the road. Several times I've come along in my car, it had a big tree, and, and if luckily they're dead, they break up and I had to drag trees out of my way. So. There's no sense in excessive trimming of live, healthy trees, when if they go along and are more aggressive. In fact, Kevin, at the bottom there, where you go south on Long Hill Road, there's a whole section of dead ash trees standing there. Towering, and they're not even marked. Those trees should be taken down. The dead ash trees, even if they're, because when they fall, they're going to hit the power lines there.
Those are probably outside the town right away, which is.
Yeah.
Private property, which is outside my marking area there.
Well, but you still mark trees on private property.
EverSource marks the trees for removal, I just verified they're removable.
So EverSource hasn't marked those for removal, and yet they're an eyesore, they're dead, they're going to fall down. I can tell you, they are going to fall down. So, uh, get rid of the dead trees, they're the ones that are causing most of this problem. And unfortunately, our little section had a lot of ash trees, and that's why we've been having all the power outages. The last two big ones, I can tell you, have been along Route eighty. With dead ash trees falling across Route eighty, power outages, eight hundred, eight hundred and forty three customers, that's our circuit. Those are dead ash trees.
Just a quick question, Kevin, you said EverSource tags trees on private property for potential removal. Who's, uh, who bears the cost of removing those trees?
Anything that EverSource marks for removal is at their cost. So if they put they, put their little orange ribbon or pink ribbon or whatever color the person has that day with them, and they staple it to the tree. They're asking permission to remove that at their expense.
Okay.
They also then. If it's in front of the person's house, if it's in the yard or in front of their house, that tree gets permission by the homeowner there. There's a slip that the homeowner signs that EverSource has and says, I'm. Yes, you have the, I do not object to that tree being removed in front of my house. Also, as part of the trimming program, they check a box saying I allow trimming of the trees in front of my residents. And there's a little pamphlet which tells the homeowner about the trimming policies and the distance away from the wires and stuff that they need to be trimming.
And so to help with forum, our special with EverSource, if EverSource bears responsibility, it's a financial burden. Does that make them less likely to tag trees, dead trees on personal property? Have you, in your experience, have you seen that that they tend not to do that?
Depending on the distance away, I mean, I've seen them remove trees on personal private property throughout town, and it depends on the distance away from the old wires, if they feel it's a threat to their. Their lines or not.
There, this is the pamphlet that they pass out, and there's A, B, and C on it with different things. They don't tell you which one they're going to do to you. It's just, have you all seen this?
Yeah.
So, it's like, that doesn't tell me much of anything. So.
Okay. Well, was there anything else you wanted to add for the record?
Oh, just for the record, yeah, I, I was, I dashed out after the fire company guys, because I was one of the movers and shakers. To get the safer grant approved in North Guilford. And we fought hard for that, and we're delighted that. You know, I'm a senior citizen, when I need to call nine one one, I'm glad there's some guys in North Guilford that are going to come help me. So, yeah, so that's. Yeah, and, you know, we really need that.
Your assistance to make that. Anyone else public forum? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to go into executive session, we'll go in for two reasons. First is, is consider take possible action on land acquisition. The second is discuss and take possible action on appeals, residents in accordance with section. Two forty seven dash thirty one, right to appeal overly tax relief program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, second. And. Ask Rebecca if you want to stay on for the first portion of this, that would be fine.
Ben Robinson.
Ben Robinson is invited in as well.
Should we do the, the land acquisition? I mean, Susan's got a timing issue.
Yeah, we'll do land acquisition first.
I have, I have a timing issue myself too.
Okay. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So.
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. In executive session, there were no motions made, no action taken, however, based on discussion. Is, is there a motion to approve the land acquisition committee to go into contract negotiations for the designated person we discussed?
So moved.
And a second, any further comments or questions? There are no, we try to question all in favor.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to rescind one of the overly tax relief? Appeals that we granted two weeks ago, is there a motion for that? So moved, second. Beyond our control, right, this, and, and, yeah, the rationale is that we undiscovered something in terms of this particular act of pro- application. That we by law can't. So, let me try your minds, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously, is there a motion to adjourn? That motion carries unanimously as well, thanks, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine, I'm sorry.